So, good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Special Work Session for Thursday, November seventh, twenty twenty four. And I will call meeting to order and we're here in motion for adoption of the agenda.
So move second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any, is there any discussion? You're none is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you very one. We have two items tonight. First. Uh, item A amended bid for construction of new police department lockers. I believe your thought. Let's see. Is there a place we can get you so you can be seen there? Sort of. Lean forward, lean forward. Welcome.
Uh, thanks for making time for this subject this evening. I think Matt might want to talk about. Uh, slide show. There's not too many slides. I do believe a lot of you are familiar with this project. It's been going on since twenty twenty two. Um, the chief spent working on getting new lockers for his police department. And uh, we finally took this to bid. Thank you, Matt. We went through the small words roster. We got one quote, and this is from Southwest Solutions. Um, it's the handout that I believe everybody has. Does everybody have one? Okay.
Thank you.
And this is what I sent over yesterday. So this is going through. Their design and also their quote. Um, but before you get into that, I'll just talk a little bit about. Why this project is so important. Uh, the lockers that the police department is using right now. Are outdated. They're from the original construction of the building. Some of them are broken. Um, shelves are bent. Some of the doors don't proper properly latch or lock. They're also too small. Some of the equipment that the um. The police officers need to use doesn't fit inside their locker. So they have to just hang it on the outside of their locker. Uh, which isn't a good use of space. There's. No seating. Uh, so they have some chairs that they move around the room and share, but there's nowhere to sit down and change your shoes. Uh, there's no um ventilation. There's no power. Uh, for all these reasons, they really need to be updated. Oh, one other thing to mention is that the annual storage is is not secure. Uh, the way it's set up right now. So so that's a really necessary improvement. All of these things will be addressed. You want to go the next slide please, Matt? So this is um, some of the schematics that Southwest Solutions provided for us and these lockers are going to be bigger. Uh, big enough to hold all of their equipment. They'll be customizable. Um, so if equipment changes or or different uh, police personnel have different needs, they can. Customize their lockers uh, to fit those needs. There's going to be a a bench drawer compartment underneath. Um, which can hold shoes. Or anything really, but I think it's meant for shoes and boots. And that also provides seating for changing your shoe and boots. Everything fits in the lockers. They're going to be uh, double welded. Heavy duty steel, just overall a much. Better product. That will last much longer than the ones that they're currently using. And um, so then I guess the only other thing to talk about uh, is the price. You want to go the next slide please, Matt? Uh, so this, this is the price here and if you. You probably remember that there was ninety three thousand dollars allocated in the twenty twenty four budget for this. Um, that number was a couple of years old when it was put there. So this is the updated number. It is. It is more a hundred and ten thousand. Um. But. If it's from the uh, the capital facilities fund and the the capital facilities fund for for that allocation can. Support this amount because there are other items um, that were. Put up for that fund for twenty twenty four that are not happening. So. So there. I don't, I don't know if I'm using the right words. It won't need to be amended, I think is what Lindsay said. And so. Another thing was just like, is that a good price or not? I looked at some prices for similar work that Marysville did in Linwood, and theirs was much, much more expensive. But they have much bigger populations, bigger police forces. And I did do the math on uh, Linwood. Their population is about three times the size of ours. Their police force is about four times the size of ours. So based on those ratios. What was it? Something like um. If if you just scaled down what they got to match our numbers, it's a. I can't find it now, but somewhere between like a hundred and twenty and a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So I do think that a hundred and ten thousand. Seems like the reasonable going rate for this product uh, in this part of the world.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Yeah.
Uh, colleagues, questions? Next chair for sure.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to thank you for doing the legwork of uh, doing the comparisons and. I think one of the things that we're going to discover is they see these little things, you know, that uh, allow us to retain and also attract. And so, uh, you know, anything that we can do to make the facilities more inclusive and kind, I think is a good thing. So very much in favor of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Tracy. College, Mr. Baldwin.
Um, yeah, I'm also in favor. It seems like we need to update the locker rooms and the price seems good. I just have a little question about the quote itself. Um, this might be a little too pedantic, but in the top right corner, it says quote valid for a hundred and twenty days. But then in the green box, it says quote valid for thirty days or else those are five percent surcharge. That's one of the like, when does the city need to commit to this?
I will find out.
Yes, we're involved.
Uh, thank you. I'm fine with this. Just take a quick question. Um, does that price look with sales tax or sales tax?
Sales tax not included in that price, so good, good fun. Yeah. A hundred and twenty three thousand. Yeah.
The other is, it looks like these come with the options of.
Yes.
But uh, this price doesn't include any. So it's going to be just another.
It that that's something that we'll have to talk more about doing. Yeah, it would be an add-on. We we haven't even gotten that far, but it would have to be an electrical contract. This contract, you can't do that. But it'll be ready for that facility.
Likes other questions for Ms. Phillips. Quite a bunch of saving voices for discussions later. Thank you so much, Katie. As always, an excellent presentation. Sure appreciate it professionalism. Alright, so colleagues, we're moving on to uh, the twenty twenty four Lake Forest Park Conference of Plan Update. I've asked. Vice Chair for the planning to continue. Uh, leading the charge on this one because it's such an excellent facilitator and appreciate this consideration. Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Um, alright, so we're we're working on two parts today. Uh, the economic development and the transportation sections of the com- the compliance update. And I think you have a copy on there. That's um, is the person from the. Was it paraphrase?
Um, for transportation, we do not have budgeted paraphrase to to be here on, and Christine is not available.
Okay, so you.
So 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 we got you. Uh, this will be captured on video, so please keep your voices up.
Okay.
And she and I will meet similar to what we did at planet vision trade notes. All I need is confirmation of amendment. We'll be sure to do that. And likely tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you for the verification. Alright, so we'll just do it the same way we always do this. Just starting with economic development, the goals. Alright, so on the uh, first page of the introduction, let's page thirteen on the handout. Um, is the comment about whether or not um. Infrastructure is upon this list and uh, whether Lake Washington access should be considered an economic asset. There is no response here, so. Whoever uh, made these comments, if you want to clarify, see how we want to change these, if we want to change.
I don't know who made a comment, but I'm not sure Lake Washington Access.
I think I was the one that. That's all learning to get her a bit. Um, I I think it's more that, yeah, it the only access is at the lakefront park. Is that really? An economic asset or is that just its apartment?
Don't you have to make or don't you have to produce? Got to do. For it to be economic.
Well, I mean, it's it's Lake Washington access, and that could also be visual access, like we described, we did the town center sub area plan that. Higher levels of the housing there would have a view of the lake. So I don't know, which again could. Be part of that economic development and stuff, but. But I don't think the park itself specifically is. Part of that.
It's not intended to be a regional serving park by any means. The inclusion here is that it's a natural asset that many cities do not have. Gives character to the location. The town center may not have a great law. Of tax purposes or something, but it is an amenity. That is there.
It's it's going to get covered in other. I don't think it's necessary.
So which one the uh, Lake Washington Access.
Yes, I think we should just be clear about what we're trying to say here. It's going to get covered elsewhere. Making this document.
I'm hearing consensus of delete.
I'm okay with deleting it.
Okay, I put something in.
House of everybody, does she have a comment? Oh, okay. That's matter of body or soccer. Do you have any uh?
No, I do not. Thank you.
I'm here. I'm just having some technical issues. My laptop's updating, so I'm going back and forth between my phone and the laptop, so I'm here. I'm just bear with me.
Alright, thanks for letting us know what's happening.
Thank you.
Alright, so I guess we'll just strike that then, yeah. Alright, on the next page, uh, equal eighty one. There's a comment about the uh. Prefer to say explicitly provide a stable tax, the sales tax base. Uh, and the reliance on cities property tax base. And I notice corrections have been made. Uh, but you okay with that?
I.
Go ahead.
Don't know if my comment got in here, but I was, do we want to, again, to be a driver to the future, a growing tax base? Since, again. Otherwise relying on a property. Taxes.
Oh, oh, for the first part, for the growth in sales tax?
Yeah.
Oh.
So provide a a a growing sales taxes.
Promising too much.
Scaring people.
We're not a growing sales tax, so it's growing sales tax.
More businesses, more home businesses.
I understand, but I'm just saying I it might be misconstrued by people.
That's the we've got a. Definition.
So I'm going to turn to you. Uh, what what have you seen in other cities' health plans? Do they doubt that they're trying to grow their uh, businesses? Explicitly in this sense that we're trying.
Yes, but they they have vacant land redevelopment, whereas this community doesn't have that same haircut. That's the primary difference. That's why this is one of the smaller health.
Right. Oh, good. And folks online.
Yeah, I'm not sure this. I'm I'm struggling with this uh, because I'm not sure. That we're going to have um. That sales tax is going to reduce reliance. On property tax. So I was, I I somehow missed this in my initial review and. I I'm not sure. It says what we want it to say, which is. That we need a sustainable tax base. To support sustainable delivery of public services and facilities. That's what I would say. I don't think the reduced reliance on the property tax base makes sense to me. Or just calling out the sales tax. So I I'm sorry to like throw a a monkey wrench into this, but I think. To me, it makes more sense to say provide a stable tax base to support sustainable delivery. Of public services and facilities, period. But I uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I mean, I I understand if uh. That goes too far for other people.
I agree. I'm good.
Take care of them. Okay. Alright, let's go with it. Yeah, let's let's go with that then. Thank you. Um, so, uh, councilmember Bodhi, we state that again one more time.
Yes, hold on a second. Um, let me. Provide a stable tax base, so take out sales. To support sustainable delivery of public services and facilities, period. Delete the rest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so I think that um, somebody has commented about E D two, three and four, or no comments on those. There's a bunch on four. Well, okay, sorry. Yeah, that's the first first part of four. Okay. So on page sixteen. Um, we now have a choice. Um, uh, I think uh. Was this Christina? I don't remember if it was to say worth or not, but uh, you now have presented. Three different policy E D four point seven for this. And uh, I don't know if you got a chance to take a look at them, but they're all slightly different with slightly different emphases. So the question is, which thing do we want to emphasize? Do you want to call out town center and southern gateway? Do we want to uh, talk about regional arteries and transit explicitly, or do we want to just make it more? Generic, like that's what I can with the third one, so.
I can make a comment on that. I think that the southern gateway, when I read uh, about the southern gateway. That is a certain area that certain businesses are allowed. Uh, and if. If gateway is going to be left in there, then I would. Like it to be only properties that are facing five twenty two. Because there's only one property that is not facing. Five twenty two that's in the gateway, and that's the three eight oh three. Parts. But the southern gateway allows certain types of businesses like hot stores. Strip clubs, things like that. So. With that in mind.
If we choose that particular.
On that point, uh, I think southern gateway is is a little broader because in my development, the front row of houses. Are zone mixed use, commercial residential. Um, I mean, they they point towards five twenty two, but they're not on five twenty two. So I think. I I prefer a more broader approach.
Again, if we if we.
If it goes option one, okay.
I I mean, I think if we're going to be dividing out what's happening in one part of the zone versus the other zone, it needs to be two different zones. If you have two different development regulations for it, they're no longer one zone. And I mean, that's just really putting a whole monkey wrench to everything.
So reading the teen leaves here, you're all looking at that uh, first one, the one that's not red. Uh, or mostly red. Um, so.
I I would actually uh, prefer the third option, just make it generic. We're looking at commercial zones. Um. And we're looking at our commercials. And then I would offer whichever one we go with to take out design standards. I think we just reflect on development standards and not whether or not it's that.
Well, actually, if I can get a clarification from you, it's development standards or design guidelines, which phrase?
Um, so, well, I think we do is development standards and that we take out design guidelines. I don't want to get into business, so I was saying we should have two colors.
So what you're saying is that's more H O A territory. But.
Can you, can someone tell me how that would read, how that policy? Would read because I I I would prefer to keep it. Broader and more generic, but I'm okay going with the third option if we brought, if we make it a little less specific.
Third one, I think is.
The most broad.
It is the most broad.
It's any commercial zone, all commercial zones.
Yes, I just think it's the, it's what happens after that. I I think um. Uh, and implement strategies to address impacts and overcome barriers. I'm not sure. That I want to commit to that part of it.
Alright, so Larry, you had a comment.
I I was going to say I like either the second or the third because it's more broad.
Yeah. Alright, so what do y'all think about uh, Debbie Mayor Bodie's comment about the uh, removing implement strategies?
I think if we're going to evaluate the impacts and then walk away, what is the point of doing it?
We aren't, we aren't necessarily, I would say. It's just that implement is not a policy. Uh, statement and it prejudges that. We would have barriers or identify barriers, for example. So if we want to write that more broadly, it's a, it's okay with me to the. The strategies part, if we want to write that more broadly, it's just assumes that we're. Going to make uh, that we've identified barriers and we're going to overcome them.
Is develop a weaker word, but explore, explore?
Consider. Yeah, I mean, for me, if you evaluate. And there's no impact, then that's the end of it.
Yeah, I'm good with explore rather than implement.
You should be implementing something to start to address it. Again, if we're going to evaluate the impact and do nothing, what's the point of doing it?
I like explore uh, and then I think it's okay to leave all the uh, overcome barriers language in.
Okay, stop, stop sharing, eliminate. Design guidelines, right?
Yep.
And then the decision on either using consider or explore instead of implement.
Yes.
And I think the preference at least expressed was explore. Any else want to try it on that?
I don't know.
I could go with either.
I mean, it just gives us an out to not do anything.
Roughly speaking, yeah, there's there's always an out to not do anything, so.
Gives us flexibility.
Yes.
Without strength.
I mean, if you don't want to make changes to the impacts, you just don't take advantage of policy four, seven, you don't evaluate it. If you're not going to do anything, why would you spend the money to evaluate it? If you don't, if you don't, if you don't have the ability to make the changes that you discover. Then you don't go into it as a policy until you're ready. That's that's all I'm saying. And maybe it's because it's evaluate the impacts is. An action.
Right.
And once we have committed to that action, we should have. Some sort of response. We cannot commit to this, and that's fine. We can always still do development regulations and this and that. But if we commit to this piece of defining what the impacts are, I feel like we really shouldn't have some. Plan in place to do something about it. Even if that we don't have the money, but you create that plan. That's that's my thinking.
No, no, and I I appreciate what you're saying and uh. I I think I think the thing I'm grappling with is how much of it is policy versus how much of it is legislation, right? Because we don't want to dive into those. So. So that's 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 why the word makes a difference to me, so.
You see that she's making comments.
Oh, yes, I can't actually see them, but I think.
Mr. Stephen. Thanks. If that's going, no, no, that's not.
Okay, that's. Alright, well, alright, having said that, then I think we've come to some kind of rough consensus anyway. Uh, what about E D four point eight? Somebody want to comment about that?
I would want to know what what. What barrier, what is considered a barrier?
Oh, I thought we were done with that one. Sorry. Okay, so.
Four point, four point eight. I thought you said.
Oh, sorry, sorry. The barriers of this one. Sorry, my my apologies. Got it.
I just wondered what uh, reduced barriers, what should be considered a barrier? Will there be a definition if for it or?
We don't know till we look into it.
Yeah, I'd say the definition is the input from like the the coffee trailer at local one or four. Where they consider a barrier as a small business. As opposed to us defining.
Okay.
In other words, it's supposed to be some case specific that it's uh, harder to go more specific to that word. And some we may not have any relationship or action associated with it.
Sure. Anybody? Anybody online?
Uh, the only thing I'd say is I think the problem is the barrier is lack of uh. Uh, appropriate like physical sites. Uh. You know, because we've talked about possibly having more. Ability to put things along Ballenger Way, for example, but we just don't. We just don't have the geography or the physical space available. So I think that's to me the primary barrier. Um, and uh, not city regulation, so. Not, I I agree with the sentiment though, which is it would be good to be able to find some more locations for neighborhood businesses, so. I'm fine with it as is. I just wanted to share that I think it's going to be. Pretty difficult because it isn't a regulatory uh, barrier. It's a geographic physical barrier.
Yeah, the the way I kind of like thinking about that is in case there are any kind of regular barriers that city is throwing up, you're right, there's always going to be physical barriers that. We are not powerless to address, but you know, just in case there are any others, I guess.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Uh, I just wanted to drop that footnote. That's all.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Uh, page seventeen, uh, last page on P D. Uh, there's a change to E D five point two. Um, and it's that tree versus certain forest canopy thing again. And uh, change to preserve to increase of your cable drive. That's good. Alright, then the final one is an eighty six point two. Um, we want to mention North Ballenger Way explicitly here. Um, I that was my comment and. I didn't know if I wanted to call out a particular area, but uh, I'm okay with that call.
I would comment now.
Okay. Alright, I'll drop my. Right, any comments, any people about transportation also online? Alright, good transportation then. Okay, so the first comment is on T, uh, sorry, on the map. Uh, page twenty one. Basically, uh. I had a problem with this map because at least in a couple of instances, the our city border is kind of off. Which is weird or is basically built to find. So if you look down for the southwest corner of the city, kind of by where um. Uh, the the uh, memorial park is, there's like a double set of dotted lines. I wasn't really sure what was going on there. I know this is probably from ancient map, which is why it's got some ambiguity, but. It'd be good to tighten that up a little bit. Guys, thanks.
I think that's because that's. One forty fifth, so you've got the border shoreline on one side of one forty fifth border of Seattle on the other, and the center is actually owned by another entity.
By the state, yeah.
So I think it's actually accurate.
But Briar Crest has.
Yeah.
Briar Crest also has issues.
But yeah, up in this area.
Oh, up in that area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't.
Past the occasion.
I don't see double dash. I just see lines that.
Maybe, yeah, maybe it's printed funny online, but yeah.
It might up there. I'll check that.
Okay.
We just look like a kind of a a ghost map underneath.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, right up there as well. Yeah, thanks. So the uh, other, the other point that I'm making is, is our our lake boundary well that well defined? Now, we have like an economic development sound like US does or something. I mean, that'd be kind of cool. No, that was true.
Well, we have ordinary high watermark, which is easy to see. Okay, um, but and then a lot of those lots. Visit or technically go out into the water.
Um, yeah.
Or even separated into a different lot in the water. Okay.
And I do believe that our. Area of. Patrol or like monitor, you know, policing goes out halfway to the through the lake and that's. I think that's how they divide up which cities. Oversee which parks of the lake.
So so is that literally our city limit?
I don't think so. I just think that's the problem, that's the largest, except as far as property lines, but we.
Yeah, normally it's the furthest property line ends of jurisdiction is that line.
Okay.
But with the water, it's jurisdiction overlap.
The mayor had a comment.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, this it, this is the. Um, these are property lines. Actually, no, they're not. They're, that's, those are not property lines. Um. Because the lake was lowered, there was issues there. When the lake was lowered, some parcels had adjacent shorelines and tide lines, some did not. Um, what I would say for police powers to, that's my riddle's comment, police powers do extend to the middle of the lake. Uh, we shared that with Ken Moore. So in terms of actual jurisdictional boundaries, uh, when it comes to. Beyond police. Yeah, I'd have to leave it up to the attorneys.
This is a, but this is, uh, this is a uh, transportation and the, the title is a roadway functional map, so. I think that we're, what we're supposed to be looking at is the red, green and yellow.
Right, no, and very good point.
If it, if it lessens the confusion, we can just draw a bigger font, dash a line. So your focus is entirely on the street class.
Yeah, the only reason I think so is because of water transport. So I didn't know what we were trying to. For policy yet, or necessary.
Well, and on point two, if I may, uh, we're dealing with a situation like Washington that the postcard is. Exerted jurisdiction for like postcard that. I, too much detail to get into here, but it's been a lot of time here sorting it out and so. Yeah, we need to actually know where.
Having the maps.
Yeah, that's important.
Okay, so moving on to the policies themselves, and firstly, one, um, there was this co- comment, which I thought was very intriguing. To basically uh, break up T one into two or three goals. A, B and C, as you see here, in the different sections aligned with those, depending on uh, active transportation, regional transit, or city planning. Um, so uh, does whoever made that comment want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, it just, I started seeing themes when I was reading it, and the themes were looked back and forth and sort of popped around, so I thought, okay, let's see if we can organize this. It's one of our longest goals. And I've noticed that it's kind of easier to, to absorb the smaller. Number of policies and how they relate to each other, so. Uh, that was my. Sort of driver behind breaking this up. It seemed natural.
But just for use of organization.
Yep, yeah, easier to take in and then. It fit the, the categories.
That's our vote.
I completely agree.
Nice. We'll make sure they're all captured in the general category, it will be in the next iteration.
I have a. I have a draft.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Okay, so um, yeah, given that though, this level of organization moving up and uh, in T one two. So, uh, I think that's my comment about there's some specific design departments for parking structures at town center, then this council has a time to pass. So, so I wanted to call that out. Next page. So there's a bunch of the Department of Fish and Wildlife recommendations that, um, or another document that was associated with stuff that was sent out of the packet. Um, so if you have any comments about those, feel free to chime in. Mostly they're adding that concept of wildlife within our city. And given the number of sightings, we've had various creatures, well, creatures, uh, I think these are appropriate, but uh, of course, happy to hear it all out.
I'm okay with it.
That's real. Okay, so um. Yeah, there's some typos, I think, uh, policy T one thirteen, where there are a couple of missing commas, but I think they may have been fixed, so. That was my comment. Two, yeah, there you.
There you go.
Yep. Alright, they're usually small, yep. And also, I think, uh, the next page on twenty four, that yellow box that has transportation local service. I'd like it up here just because I was reading this and see LOS centers, LOS, and I was like lots of service, what are, what are we talking about? So it's nice that when it's actually closer to the, when, when the, uh, academics.
Do you, um, is there agreement that it should closely follow the first reference of LOS? After we restructure those into three categories?
Yes.
Online folks, anybody?
I think I had, I might have had a comment that didn't get caught.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so just, I'll bring it up that. I feel like we should have a policy that is also about coordinating with our neighbor jurisdictions around, um. The, around, um, access to regional transit, like the Linklight rail, like, we keep talking about. The inner urban and, and we could do whatever we want on Perkins, but then it just, it just dies on the other end on, in shorelines. Uh, road, cause they just haven't developed that road yet.
What section?
I think that's a T, it's a T. It's a new policy. That I was thinking we should, yeah, it's either a new policy or if we want to amend, maybe T one point two. To include.
Oh, we had one.
Jurisdiction, adjacent jurisdictions.
I thought we agreed on it.
Yeah.
We agreed on that.
One or two second set seems to. I mean, I, I don't know, it's, it's very specifically about additional regional upstream park and ride facilities, but I wonder if you were saying.
More than that, let's, let's change upstream park and ride to just regional transit because. Getting to the one eighty fifth. You know.
Right.
Street, that's not an upstream park and ride. This was very park and ride focused. So that's why I thought maybe a new policy might make more sense.
Right. And the overall goal is of course expanding intermodal transportation, so it would make sense to of course connect with our neighbors, yeah. Alright, so um, rather than basically take a lot of time right now doing it, do you want to suggest a policy change, uh, sort of policy number and stick it in the appropriate place?
Sure.
Okay.
Or, yeah.
Uh, if anybody has any thoughts they want to share with Councilmember Riddle, let's do so. Okay, thank you. Alright, the goal T two. Moving safety, fact, transportation, uh, there's a couple of every. Yeah, yes, recommendations here, but uh, comment on those, but in terms of ones that y'all made, uh. There was a comment on page twenty five under all the bullet points. It says, uh, the fourth bullet point should include bus rapid transit and has been included. Any issues with that?
Trace, sorry, Tracy, can you hear?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you, um, I'm not seeing page numbers, can you, um, be more specific at what line number?
The policy T dash two point one. And it's uh, one, two, three, four bullet points down.
Okay, one sec, I just have to get back to that.
Okay, fair enough. And there are, and it's, uh, at least on my copy, the bus rapid transit is included in that bullet point.
Uh, if I could suggest that we say bus routes. Because we don't mean to limit this, I don't think to just. Uh, like sound transit, uh, bus rapid transit.
Alright, so we'll change uh, bus rapid transit to bus rapids. Got it, thanks, alright, thank you, Gus, thank you there. Okay, um, and then I think a slightly more, um, interesting comment in the sense of uh, changing things substantively is. The one on uh, proposed deleting the policy T two point two, I believe, is that correct, or, or uh, suggests that?
Yeah, so um, it's kinda following on from what I said at a previous meeting, which is, and looking at the Berkman Crossing. The bridge, the tunnel's not feasible, the bridge would be twenty feet up and would have a four hundred foot ramp for a five percent grade. And it just seems to me that if that's what the standard bridge design would be, that. People aren't gonna wanna walk up and down two flights of stairs, they're not gonna wanna walk a four hundred foot ramp if it means doubling back. And so I really think we should be prioritizing at grade crossings of five twenty two and one oh four.
I agree. I agree that we should be encouraging safer crossing. However, I would still leave in policy two point two. The reason for that is that while. There may be differences of opinion on the council, council of the whole may wish to pursue that option. And therefore having anything that is planned is appropriate. So.
We could also add at grade.
Or at grade.
To cover the three options, so. If an at grade option comes up first, we could do that, and then if the. Se- great separated option comes up at a future date when we have. Access to the funding and the whatever, we could still do that, and it doesn't preclude each other.
Um, so I'm gonna ask Director Hoffman a question, which is, when you think about federal grants like the raised grants that Shoreline and Kenmore gives me to. Put their pedestrian safety corridors and, um. Do those, do those kind of grants come with, you have to build a particularly kind of thing, or are, are rate crossings also considered, uh, in the proposals for those kind of grants?
I've seen all types. Depending the situation, and then it's competitive from there, right?
It would, if we added that grade into one of those, I, that would be. Cover all of it.
That even covers crossings, not here at town center, but you know, that grade pedestrian improvements throughout the.
Councilor Goldman, what do you think?
Border.
That, that would, that would have dressed my, my main concern.
Okay. Alright, let's go ahead and make that change, then we'll do that with some. Comment editing, okay.
And just separate them all again.
I over, over comment, but we'll put the proper number in there, that's there.
Alright, so um, let's, anybody online has a comment, we'll move on. Alright, so we got uh, T two point, I believe, uh, four, in which uh, walkways are switched with active transportation back, uh, facilities. And uh, the responses, please confirm that this is the appropriate placement board. So I'm not sure if we made the.
T four. Yeah, that was me, um. Yeah, just, uh, you know, it may be a walkway, but it may be other kinds of access, it could be a. Separated bike lane or whatever, so just that of transportation facilities seem to just be. More inclusive of what choices we might get left.
Sure, it's okay there, right?
I think it's fine there.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just said may offer that instead of facilities, it's infrastructure.
Absolutely, you may offer, and I'm happy, I agree with that, to make it better.
Got it. Okay, so uh, two point five then is, so uh, moving around supports involving street lighting and pedestrian scale lighting. Uh, for remain dot com, it is that, uh, what you were looking for.
Let's see, some improved street lights, pedestrian scale lighting. Yeah.
Right. Next page, that, twenty seven, old T three point three, or policy T three point three. Uh, that was my comment, uh, I think this.
You're, you're scrolling all, we have one on.
There's one minor one on.
Oh, sorry, page twenty six, my, my bad.
Not minor, but.
Yep, T two, what, two, T's, we put four T down at the bottom of page twenty six, uh. Uh, there's an alternative phrasing of this, um, that's my comment, this one, hope, uh. So, and there's also somebody else's comment about liking the language of active transportation rather than listing all these, what do y'all think?
I agree with that.
Alright, let's just switch it to promote appropriate street conditions for active transportation. Okay. Two point three, uh, T, sorry, gold T three, uh, also T, three point three on page twenty seven. I, that was my comment about the comma, and uh, I think it's been deleted, so I'm, I'm okay with that. Alright, that's moving all the way to gold T five, page nine. Couple of comments on, um. The, uh, it looks like the fourth, uh, bullet point under T one, uh, five one. Like to delete this bullet point. What do you all think, but?
Um, yeah, I mean, if we're looking to emphasize active transportation, something that explicitly prioritizes traffic flow seems to go against that.
What is access to traffic flow? Are we talking about people pulling out of their driveways? Into the flow?
On five twenty two. On five twenty two, there's some, some residents that live on the east side and they're only able to get out through certain. Roads and they're only able to go a certain direction and, and that's being reduced. And there's also, uh, I would think a safety consideration on emergency vehicles, being able to reach them. With the current design, it, it's, the, the vehicles are still not. You know, they have to, it's, it's a big stretch, in other words, you're not gonna be able to turn around between one fifty third and one sixty fifth, that's a big stretch. So I think that we need to make sure that along there, that we consider. People entering or exiting, that their streets and driveways.
So is, would it just be access to off the way or five two two, think?
But I think it's both, I, I think it's that first mile equation. Have to get to work, but it seems like the first thing that makes me mad is, I'm gonna get where I need to start to go. Or I wanna go get a coffee, but I need to wait for a break in traffic and wouldn't it be neat for a little shortcut here? Councilor Goldman, so to that clarify that it's about getting, rather than traffic flow itself.
Yes, I, I'll have the same comment when we get to five point two.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see, for, for that bullet point, yeah, as long as it's explicit that it's about people getting onto five twenty two. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so then, um, uh, the next bullet point there, getting everything, getting rid of everything after city limits.
The word limit should still be there, so limits should be unstruck.
Yeah. Alright, so everybody got it down here? Okay, uh, policy T five point, uh, five point two, um. Similarly, I, before the bullet point, so I think yours.
Yeah, basically, the way it was originally written makes it seem like it's prioritizing arterial cars overall else, which I'm not a fan of.
Great. So.
What, what do smarts else do? What smart, I mean, like. Technically.
Oh, I mean.
How are?
The, the definitions.
Oh, well, then I'll read that.
I wasn't gonna explain.
Thank you. I appreciate that being there, it helps, yeah.
Alright, so, um.
I like this.
So basically, uh, Councilor Goldman, the strike through is what you want? Yeah, right, okay.
Could I just suggest, um, I think to optimize arterial throughput should be deleted. But I think considering arterial neighborhood access interface. Seems to be the issue that Councilmember Good was talking about. So maybe some version of that should stay in. Or is it adequately covered by the bullet above? That, that's my question.
I, they, for me, I don't think that smart signals, they're only in certain areas. And. The, but the people that do need to go to work or pull out or do something, they're, they're in arterial neighborhood. Access.
Okay. Okay, so I'm fine with the deletion, thanks.
Alright, go ahead on that one? Hey, you have what you need?
Uh, everything in the strikeout is the consensus, right?
No, I don't, no, 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 I would, I would like to. In, uh, keep in there while also considering arterial neighborhood. Access.
Okay.
Or, I mean, what is another word for access or, you know, going to and from, getting in or out of their. Place of residence?
Well.
Well, you don't have a traffic light there.
Right.
Right.
So the, and this is specifically about the traffic light. Traffic light managed intersections, as I understand it, that's the only thing this traffic light can really control.
Right. But I.
So like at one sixty fifth. Right, we, we do wanna make sure that. People at one sixty fifth can make a left turn on a, off the way and timely mount.
While, while also considering arterial neighborhood access interface, so that means that they don't have a light, so, but they still need to be able to have access. So I would, for me, I would like just. To can, to keep in while also considering arterial neighborhood access interface, because.
No, I agree, I just think it means something different. That's all.
Well, we could use the phrase, uh, access to traffic flow that we, that we did in the fourth bullet point.
I, I then, I don't know, what are we putting a traffic light in every driveway? Like, this is about the traffic light.
Yeah, I'm reading that five point two is specific for inters, for signalized intersections. Whereas for like, get out of your driveway onto five twenty two, that would be in that fourth bullet point to five one.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, alright, so we'll just basically leave the strike through as in the second.
I mean, no, we can consider the arterial neighborhood access roads, maybe. And we'll call that good. In other words, we don't wanna prioritize both the way. So much that people sit there and idle for a full three minutes and don't ever get going anywhere. But we don't want the light to switch if nobody's coming down one sixty fifth.
Can I ask you to basically write the language up so that we can tell Director Hoffman, well, will we put it in the park, has it worried the parking lot for now, and then we'll. Well, will we put it in the park, has it worried the parking lot for him, and then we'll address it next time?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alright, we've got about a minute here, so basically, if you love, so someone's here, yeah, so we have one last page of, uh, uh, thirty, T six and T seven. Uh, I think these are all fairly straightforward, uh, changes. Does anybody have any particular objections to any of them? For instance, I call that Metro Flex, cause we have that now, right, so, yeah.
Wordsmithing it's strike three, not strike twenty three.
Oh.
Well, the line is the strike three line, and strike two is Bellevue.
Hey, anything else on this page, people online?
I'm looking.
Okay.
Nothing for me. Looks, looks fine to me, thanks.
Alright.
Well done, everybody.
Thank you for, uh, seven point three on the P P D, the, oh, don't thank me, that's W P F G, yeah.
Official wildlife.
Official wildlife, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I completely support, oh, plus all the students from, you know, Seattle.
Okay, with that, unless there's anything else for, on topic, we are adjourned, we're moving upstairs, thank you very much, Councilmember for twenty, thanks for twenty.